You ready? Yeah, okay, good evening. Welcome to our first live streaming meeting for the Board of Supervisors for East Township. We would like to just let you know that this meeting is livestreamed, is being livestreamed using the Zoom video conferencing platform. The meeting agenda and the directions on how to view the meeting were posted previously on the Township website, Township Facebook page, the front door of the municipal building, and they were also sent by email using the Township email signpost. The notice for this meeting included instructions on how to submit public comments, the portion being in which we do have some public comments. Comments were able to be received from emails or regular mail up until noon of today's meeting. Comments received, we read during tonight's meeting, and no password is needed to access the meeting through. Remote participants can view and hear the meeting as it happens, but your audio is muted, so anything that you say, we cannot hear. Your video feed is turned off, meaning that we cannot see you. We see names, but we do not see faces. The meeting is being recorded, and the recording will be posted on YouTube. And how virtual, how we conduct this first ever virtual meeting here, we may have need to change and modify, so this is a learning experience for us. Thank you for being patient with us and very good with us. Please be sure to continue to check the Township website for the meeting notices. So let's move right into the heart of the meeting. I'll order, I'll note that we'll start off the meeting with a prayer, a pledge of flag led by Supervisors.
You'll join me in prayer. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here. We thank you for those who have joined us elsewhere. Father, we just pray for this township. We pray for our state, and we pray for our nation, those around the world who are struggling right now. Father, we pray for all these who are dealing with illnesses, and the particular illness of COVID-19, those on the front line, who are serving their fellow citizens in the healthcare system. Father, we just lift them all up to you, pray that you give them an added measure of strength and courage and help as they seek to care for their fellow man. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to do business this evening, the township, and for the welfare of this municipality, and we thank you for that, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Would you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And let the world know that all three supervisors are in attendance, along with Township Manager Jeffrey Ball. So the first item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing for zoning amendment.
The proposed amendment that we're holding the hearing for is an amendment that changes or addresses Chapter 52 of the Township Code of Ordinances, the chapter that contains the zoning ordinance regulations of the township. In accordance with the Pennsylvania Municipality's Planning Code, because it is a zoning amendment, we are required to hold a public hearing to consider the amendment. The county planning commission is part of this process, reviewed the amendment, and on February 13th recommended adoption of the amendment as proposed. The public hearing of the Board of Supervisors has been advertised, further requirements, the copy of the official publication has been provided to us. This amendment adds one paragraph to the existing list of residential parking requirements currently in the ordinance. And it's fairly easy. It's a one paragraph that reads, "A maximum of one recreational vehicle, travel trailer, boat, or camper is permitted to be parked on any lot in any residential district, provided that it is not used for sleeping, recreation, sleeping, recreation, or living purposes at any time while parked on the property. Parking of such vehicle on access drive there too shall be surfaced with an all-weather, durable, and dustless material such as stone, asphalt, and concrete. Shall be separated and drained as to dispose of all stormwater accumulation. Replacement shall be subject to the minimum yard requirements that are applicable to the placement of accessory buildings." This proposed amendment is a result of a multi-month discussion about concerns and complaints, parking of oversized vehicles on residential streets, public streets of the township. Should these vehicles, if an ordinance is passed that requires these vehicles to be removed from the public streets, residents that don't have other places to park these will start parking in other residential lots. And that cause of concern is part of our discussion. The amendment attempts to guide where they're located in a residential lot to lessen the potential impact on neighboring properties. And it does establish a setback requirement similar to that in accessory building placement of residential property. Simple enough, it's one page by our one paragraph amendment. Questions from the board?
Because of the constraints of having to hold a virtual meeting this month, it's, 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 do we feel like we've had enough time to hear public comment on this? Or is this something that might make sense to table and perhaps your team?
I believe this is being tabled. I believe it's to continue the voting.
In the past months, when we've talked about the parking of recreational vehicles on the street, the majority of the discussion has been about the parking along the street and not really about this particular ordinance. So if you're feeling that you're not gathering, or you haven't had the opportunity, especially with the meetings here, had the opportunity for public input, you could continue the hearing until May. I wouldn't close the hearing that you recommend, that you can continue it, so that we don't have to re-advertise it as a new hearing. Continuation would be the motion you'd want to make.
I think that's the smartest course of action. Alan says that I'll make a motion to table this until May.
Well, this is just the public hearing part of it, so you're making a motion to continue the hearing?
To continue the hearing. Okay, so Alan's made a motion to continue the hearing. Can I get a second for that?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second to continue the hearing. All those in favor have signed by by saying aye?
No, aye.
Okay, we take this hearing to the month of May. All right. Now, this is the portion of the meeting where we would open it up to public comment. And there were two emails that were received prior to the meeting for consideration. One email was received from Karen Gausse, 26th Thorne Apple Drive, requiring that noise issues and the possibility of implementing an ordinance to address this issue. Do you have her email here? Addressed to the Board of Supervisors. I recently have been dealing with noise issues 24/7 and submitted a complaint back in early March outlining the details, and hope that you would kindly discuss the possibility of implementing ordinance. But I'm dismayed to see that it isn't on the upcoming agenda for April 7th. Will you be considering one soon, or March 5th is briefly mentioned for review and consideration? So I mean, it seems that we don't get a lot of complaints about them, because I know at times we have issues around the Fourth of July fireworks.
I believe this has been an important issue for Mrs. Gausse.
It has been, and we have written, received written comments from her before, followed up on a zoning aspect of this rather than going after the noise ordinance or the noise regulation. We're pursuing it through the Township Solicitor on this zoning issue, which should address her concern. Again, the notice has gone out from the Township Solicitor, so we're working to resolve the issue on the neighboring property. We should then also take care of the noise concern of that property.
So at this point, our solicitor has sent a notification to where the noise is coming?
Yes.
Has there been any further information?
I don't believe so. Craig's been working on that, and Craig's been working on the current situation.
But action has been taken?
Yes.
Now, in general, is it something that we do want to maybe look a little bit deeper into? I mean, this situation may have resolved, but is it something that we do want to consider? And I'm sure there's plenty of guidelines out that we need to look at. Is it something that we feel like we have a problem with?
Well, in my, in my time here, it's not, it's not been years long as I've heard you, but this is the first actual, I think, noise complaint that I can recall. You'd be able to speak to, you know, the number of noise complaints.
Again, it's mainly Fourth of July.
Right, and I think, I think, yeah, and Fourth of July is...
And we did it, we did address that with our policy.
Yeah, there was a policy put into place regarding fireworks being set off at times of day.
Yes.
So we were able to address that that way, but...
What can the police do as far as coming out? If you're in charge of disturbing?
They're disturbing the peace, there's probably some sort of public nuisance or something.
Is that a whole law? Why can't?
That I don't know.
Have they addressed this situation at all? That's why I'm wondering.
I can check with the police chief and follow up.
So do we want Jeff to perhaps give us some sample guidelines or... Want to, you know, measure the noise ordinance? Do you want to talk to the chief first?
I'd recommend talking to the chief first, if there's other avenues. When you get into a noise ordinance, what could be, you know, getting into determining what levels are appropriate, what time, how do we measure that? We'd need somebody out at the point with some sort of device to measure levels of noise or sound and parking dogs.
You start getting into festival levels, you start getting into all sorts of... If the wind's blowing the right way, I can hear a bad day, I can hear Armstrong for at least a mile and a half away. So it's one of those things where I'd like to look at other ordinances and examples.
Well, you can talk to the chief first, and then at the same time, Jeff, you can give us some sample samples. All right. Okay. All right, so we at least gave that some discussion, hopefully Karen and Gausse's... If there's any further follow-up, Karen, feel free to, you know, contact the township with the follow-up emails, and we'll continue to look into it. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Second email that we received was from Rodney Hallow, North 9, North River Street, and it addresses a item not on tonight's meeting agenda and one item that is, the item that is on the agenda is the Osprey Park. You want to go to this one?
You probably want to address the portion of her email that was about the square. About the square, that's not an item on the agenda, so that is appropriate for this part of the agenda.
Okay.
You want to make sure you're talking, even the light from the...
Yeah.
You can pull a little closer.
So he listed...
Oh, it's December, it starts December 5th.
On December 5th, 2019, the Board of Supervisors unanimously voted, unanimously voted for staff to prepare the required ordinance necessary to replace the existing stop signs at the High Street approaches to Center Square with yield signs. On about December 10th, 2019, PennDOT installed yield signs on the River Street approaches to Center Square. It's now been four months since the above stated vote. When will your staff be preparing the required ordinance?
And I could respond to that. There was some discussion at our last meeting about a follow-up to what's happening with that square. As a refresher, after the township placed or had PennDOT place yield signs on the River Street approaches, the board did express a desire to switch the High Street approaches from the existing stop signs to yield signs. And at that time, we talked about there would probably be some sort of study required by PennDOT, but it wasn't quite known exactly what that was. So we did contact PennDOT as a follow-up to that meeting at that time, and said, you know, the board is now desiring to replace those stop signs with additional yield signs. PennDOT's initial response was, wait and see how those yield signs go, but just see how it goes before we decide to do anything that... Before you jump ahead and actually find out what's going on. In fact, they responded, and I have a copy of the email that he sent back, that he asked me to obtain PennDOT approval for the study to switch the signs. The study may be sent to him directly, wasn't aware of the switch being considered, although it was kind of talked to him with him at the time. And the mainline yield is based on the assumption that the side streets are stop control. Then he asked that, we have our township engineer, the traffic engineer that we work with, to call him if this is being, seriously being considered, because there's some serious hits or serious considerations here. So in a follow-up call between the district engineer who wrote the email and the traffic engineer that works with us, again, PennDOT expressed a desire to just wait and see how the yield signs go, and we can respond to that without the need, you know, without taking any other further steps with the stop signs. And although there hasn't been, you know, any other reported issues other than the general confusion that's always existed in the square, last month, he did direct staff to contact PennDOT again to see what their position is in changing the stop signs to yield signs. And he did respond back with a fairly lengthy email, and the board's received, I think you've got copies in front of you of that email issued by PennDOT response to that question. In summary, their position is that the existing intersection is, it's called a circular intersection, which is different than, by definition, different than a roundabout. And that by changing the stop signs to yield, it then falls under the definition of a roundabout, and therefore needs to conform to the design criteria of a roundabout. And he outlined a few things that would need to be changed, at least as an outset, and that would be the lane width, the crosswalks would have to be moved, because there's not a pedestrian island in the middle of each approach. And the center island does not have a truck apron. And a truck apron, you probably see them in other squares or other circles, it's a concrete apron that serves two purposes. First, it marks the inner lane of the roundabout, and it slows vehicles down, but more importantly, it allows an area where trucks that go through can mount that concrete curb or concrete area apron to go around the roundabout. In his email, he does express one of the biggest issues is the access to the square itself, the center island of the square. It's their position, PennDOT's position, that the township would have to agree to limit or restrict pedestrian access to the central island. And also points for parking around this where may need to be eliminated or changed in some fashion, depending on the ultimate design solution.
So that would eliminate parking, maybe a free center square, where people that go up to the post office.
Post office.
Across the street from where I live, where I live.
All four, all four sides have parked, are utilized for parking.
Right, right.
Would that include the area in front of Miss Hallow's house?
Yes, yeah, I'm sure that'd be a possibility as well. So it concludes in saying, so considering all the challenges, it's apparent that converting the location to a roundabout from the circular intersection that it is would be more complex project than many people would understand.
And you're saying that is the next thing that would have to be done if we do indeed put those yield signs up on both sides of High Street?
Correct. It would be a complete study of the pedestrian parking circulation, access to the square. That study and design would have to comply with the current PennDOT roundabout design criteria.
All right. Okay, so we did, as a board, vote to put those yield signs up. So what would our next step of that meeting? Would we do a study, or do we just, do we say, look, this, what PennDOT is saying is pretty significant?
It's very significant.
So significant that, to me, it says, we should not proceed with putting those yield signs up.
With the new information and the new restrictions put in place by PennDOT. Right, if those restrictions would have been known at the time of that vote, I would not have voted in favor of putting yield signs on High Street. Now with that information, I would say no, just the signs there. However, with the vote having taken place, how would we proceed?
Well, the vote was based on preparation of an ordinance, because we knew an ordinance, but we didn't know exactly what that study was going to take from PennDOT. Now we have an idea, at least, of what the scope of the study would be. Certainly another motion to track, withdraw, rescind.
Rescind that, yeah, rescind that decision.
I mean, obviously, there was a thought at that time that it would not take, although it was discussed that it would take some sort of studying, we didn't know what it would be.
Right, right.
And now we have a good idea.
We would lose, I mean, the historical statistics of this, where we would now start to lose, I mean, in terms of it's not a place where people could necessarily go.
Well, just the configuration of the square itself would have to change based on the comment about a truck apron going around it, to be able to accommodate truck traffic.
And then would we then have enough lane, would the lane width be appropriate size once we do that?
And each, each approach, under the new PennDOT requirements for roundabout, each approach would have what they call diverger, that would direct traffic to the right and around the square, circle at the time. And those diverters would need to have pedestrian refuge areas in, so that, you know, it's a number of design criteria that would change the characteristic of the square.
And, no, all of PennDOT's expense?
No, because it would be our project, right? In fact, he, he goes on to suggest that we should contact the county to try to get on the transportation improvement plan, which is indication to me that it's a fairly high-dollar project.
But even if we, even if we got all that improvement plan, it appears as though we would be restricting all foot traffic to the square, which I don't think is a desirable direction that we want to go. Also, the parking, we know that the parking would be practically eliminated, completely removed. So I'm not sure. I think if you change that intersection to a roundabout, rather than a certain intersection that it already is, I think you lose the aesthetics of the square itself. It becomes a sort of newer, concrete, industrial-looking roundabout. I don't think that's a direction we want to take, et cetera. Is it, is it appropriate to make that motion now, or would that be something we would consider?
Well, that's, while we're talking here, Rodney Hallow has sent to the township an email, which I'll summarize here, that she's going to request, write to no request regarding the communications with PennDOT. And she references the Gettysburg and New Oxford squares, where new engineering changes remain. So rather than taking a vote tonight, that's...
We can, we can, yes.
Let's put that, let's, let's come back to that next month. We need that more discussion on, but I would like to be able to, if anybody would like to read that's an email?
Yeah, you have to. And that's where we have to see the...
Okay, yeah, we can, we can forward that, and then have a more discussion about it. So we don't need to undo anything we've done, we can just simply come back to it.
Right, come back to it. We have, share that information.
I mean, is there...
From PennDOT, we can share the information we have from PennDOT, and discuss it at the next meeting.
Because we took action when we did, are we compelled to put signs up within a certain period of time, or haven't we had additional input from PennDOT?
We can take that a step further, we can prepare the ordinance to do it, you can vote on the ordinance and vote the ordinance down.
You can vote the ordinance down.
I mean, if, if, I guess, it's easier to rescind the action.
Okay.
But if need be, we can prepare the ordinance, and the ordinance gets voted down.
Prepare the ordinance.
If that's something that you, you know, the adoption of the ordinance is saying you're going to undertake the studies and the improvements.
Well, what I'm saying is, do we, do we have to, I mean, is there a time constraint here, where could we circle back again, then, after we give anybody that wants to see this additional information, or their right to know, that this, or we compelled the applicants of a certain period of time?
No. No, because we, no, when we voted, we didn't, we, there was no timeline in there. We voted, we made that motion and voted, it was just to proceed with that, not, but there's no timeline stable. So, but I think it's definitely, I mean, we can certainly send this information to Miss Hallow, and make it available, corresponds with PennDOT, and then discuss this later.
It was pretty compelling when I read that.
From PennDOT?
From PennDOT.
Yeah, right. That's exactly right, I agree.
Okay, so there is...
We should be on to the minutes.
Was there, was there another comment that brought it down? I thought for a second.
Oh, the ordinance, we can get to those comments when we get to the ordinance. So it's probably, since it is an item on the agenda, it's more appropriate to bring them up then.
Okay, all right.
I just want, for the, you know, record here, that we did receive additional public comment after the noon deadline today, and the comments are related to the ordinances that are on the agenda for this evening, so we can, I can mention it again, and I just want to make sure that we only mentioned that we received two, but there was a third received this afternoon.
It looks like it was timestamp 2:42 PM, but we need flexible. All right, so then, let's go to, consider approval of minutes for March 5, 2020. All right, I'll make a motion to approve minutes for March 5.
I second that motion.
Okay, so all those in favor of approving the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And let's consider approval of the treasurer's report for the township and approval of payment of all the bills.
I move that we pay all bills.
I will second that. Just bear with me here. All right, so a motion to pay the bills, second. All those in favor of paying the bills as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, so let's, also want to acknowledge that we received the balance sheets for the township funds as of February 29, 2020, which provide to each one of us. So now let's move into, oh, business. Subdivisions landed. Subdivisions, land development, stormwater management, and planning modules. Stormwater management plan for Marriott Motors, extension of time.
I move to accept the extension of time for consideration of the stormwater management plan for Marriott Motors until July 15 of 2020, as granted by the applicant.
I will second that. You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, resolutions. Resolution 2020-6, declaration of disaster emergency.
Alright, I'll move to ratifying the action of the board of supervisors taken by telephone on Friday, March 20, 2020, declaring the existence of a disaster emergency at this time of the calendar in response to the COVID-19 pandemic.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? We did that in order to be able to have access to state federal funds.
Correct, and shortcut some red tape if we needed to purchase materials or contract services and things like that.
Need to get equipment here quickly or whatever the cases. Right, motion second, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Ordinances. Ordinance 2020-3, amendment to general parking regulations, township code ordinances. Make a motion for that, please.
I'll move to adopt ordinance 2020-3, amending chapter 28, general parking regulations of the township code ordinances by adding restrictions prohibiting parking in certain locations at all times and prohibiting parking of certain vehicles in the right of township.
We had a question.
Serious questions.
Serious questions pertaining to ordinance 2020-3, amendment to the general parking regulations. And these were all from Brady, I believe.
Yes, yeah, these are the comments of that same email.
Okay.
Some were on the agenda, the other wasn't.
Okay, question, do you feel it necessary to adopt the same requirement for mailbox that is imposed for a fire hydrant? And, or, you can answer the question, a fire hydrant must remain open at all times for emergency purposes. Do we need the same restrictions on a mailbox? Mail is delivered momentarily once a day for six out of seven days in a week. So do we feel it's necessary to adopt the same requirement for a mailbox that is imposed for a fire hydrant?
Do you want to run through those three questions?
Alright, have we calculated the impact this will have on street parking? This restriction will take away 30 feet of parking space in the front of a home with a mailbox. So what was the impact number? How many parking spaces will be lost? And the next following question is, do you feel a better way to approach this would be to limit the new park into community mailboxes versus all mailboxes, or to move this to section 28 104, which would restrict parking during certain days and hours? Several questions are.
Yeah, you can look through me. I can answer those, or at least try to address what the thought was when the board put this together. It started out with community mailboxes, but I think we heard through the process of this that it also extends to individual mailboxes in various locations. In effect, the email this afternoon was, was some of that to that point. Again, trying to set times. We don't know when the mail is going to be delivered, so setting times for this just doesn't seem to be unreasonable, unless you do it Monday through Friday or Monday through Saturday. Of course, now there's Sunday delivery of packages that come into your mailbox as well. So it does turn out to be a seven-day week, unknown time during the day. Again, it's only a concern if it's during the time the mail is being delivered and a vehicle's parked there. Whoever lives there can call the police and get a ticket placed on the vehicle, or if there's no vehicle there, it's not an issue. The vehicle parks at 1 o'clock in the morning, we're not going to have police driving around checking mailboxes at 1 o'clock to make sure the vehicles, you know, the mailbox is clear from 15 feet.
So the issue would be if someone, had someone parking in front of their mailbox, and the mail delivery just said we can't get there, so we're just going to skip you in the morning?
At that point, the resident could call the police and there could be action taken. Right now, the resident could call the police, call us, call the postal service, and the post office will tell them they're not obligated to stop, and they won't stop. They won't stop the next day till the vehicle's moved. And there's no real recourse against the person parking the vehicle there. We have not calculated, we haven't gone around and tried to calculate how many parking spaces will be lost because of this. Doubt that there's going to be any really loss. Mailboxes are placed typically, private mailboxes alongside a driveway. So that would be kind of the 15 feet in one direction.
Right.
The other direction is, is not that great of an impact on the number of parking spaces. And again, it's only courtesy not to park there when you think the mail is going to be delivered. It's not going to be a violation of the ordinance, they're not going to get a ticket if they're parking there at 1 o'clock in the morning and gone by 8 o'clock. So we're really not taking away that parking space.
See, most mailboxes are not blocked. We're really not taking away many parking spaces at all.
That's, that's true, well, yes. So really providing us a reasonable area, 15 feet on both sides of a mailbox to allow for when the, when the mail delivery happens, allow for that to be open. It seems to be a reachable.
Reachable.
Yes, time to time, request.
Okay. Alright, next question is, since this pertains to areas on private lot versus public street, would it be better addressed in zoning versus this ordinance? Now, while you're looking that up, I'm going to read an email that I just received from Brady. Says that only ticketing select times by complaint only is selective enforcement of the law. This law says they can't park there just like you can't park by a fire hydrant at all.
I would think it's similar to selective enforcement for 30, for 30 miles an hour than 25 miles.
Right, tough to decide.
Quite sure.
There's officer discretion. It's, there's officer discretion. The officers are police, our police force can use discretion. Right, that'd be correct?
Yeah, I mean.
Right, so they, they would have the ability.
For years, that stop sign existed right there on High Street where, I mean, a stop sign is complete stop. It's not a rolling stop, it's not blow through, so.
So by, by this ordinance, we would be, we would be, our, our, a police force would be able to cite somebody at, but they may use discretion. That would be up to them then.
Yeah, we're not saying they can't cite the person.
Right, correct. We're not putting the time.
Section 1H, the question was, since this pertains to areas on private lot versus public street, would it be better addressed in zoning versus, in zoning versus this ordinance? A treats no vehicle shall be parked in any time in front of any private garage or driveway or within a private drive as to impede or prohibit entrance for accident unless with blocking such garage, driveway, private drive, as that of an owner of the garage, driveway, or private drive. This is actually mirrored in the vehicle code that it does talk about parking on the street, blocking driveways on the street, maybe blocking a garage that orbits the street. So it does seem to be appropriate to keep vehicles out of the areas other than your own, obviously, parking in front of driveways and garages. Again, it's an immediate, through this ordinance, it's an immediate, it can be an immediate ticket citation, as opposed to zoning, which requires an issuance of a cease and disorder, violation notice, 30-day appeal period, and, and, you know, on and on. So this is a much more directed.
Okay. As I've stated before, I'm reading from the comments from Brady Haddlet. It's pretty common for municipalities to prohibit parking of these vehicles on the public streets. What is unclear and not fully addressed in this subsection, subsection is the period of time, seven days, that these vehicles are allowed to be parked on the public street. Question, when does the seven-day time period begin? When the vehicle arrives or when it's planted. Question, how many seven-day time periods are you allowed, unlimited between each off-site use? Question, who will be documenting these time periods, arrivals and departures? The police force, the public streets? Will they be responsible for this? Have you spoken to them about what is required and how they develop the procedure for this? And, just continue over here, yes.
Well, we can address, let's move to the seven days first. That's probably a good place to break. I think we discussed this a little bit at the last meeting. We had people in the audience, some ideas of going beyond seven days, some were for three days.
We also, I believe we discussed, at least, I, I recall discussing this at the police mission as well.
Following the meeting, I did have a chance to talk with the police chief and about this. So there are concerns, and I have the same concern, and I expressed them at least one or two previously, of people gaming the system with the seven days and prescribing seven days as the penalty. It would start, obviously, when the vehicle appears, but there is the possibility that someone's there for seven days, those for two days, comes back, and now the next seven days he's unloading or loading for the next trip. And just between trips, it's parked on the street and would be in compliance with the seven days. The elimination of that allows police officers, again, to enforce through a ticketing system that they're, they're going to develop or enforce this for, enforce these sections. There's a ticketing mechanism that, that the chief is working with his, his folks to develop for enforcement.
Okay.
And I, yeah, I originally thought that the seven days may be an option, but after further discussion, I would actually amend the motion to strike for that. So I would actually strike that language from the ordinance that we.
Well, we might, after we walk through this, maybe Alan can rescind this. Alan made a motion.
Alan made, Alan made the original motion here.
We could just do it.
Okay.
But I.
Or die to you, the live.
I was, I decided.
Who won the second?
It wasn't second, anyway.
You won't get a complex way to win on second. We can second it.
No, I think we.
Okay, we just can let it go.
Right, I would make a new motion. Okay, we have one more question.
Alright, then, question, you've stated in public meetings the safety concerns with these vehicles obstructing clear sight distance, narrowing the travel lanes, et cetera. If an accident does occur due to one of these reasons, is the township liable because you knew it was a safety hazard or let it remain? Are you willing to place the township in such potential liability, lessen the safety of its residents? Without answers to the questions, listen to the ordinance, it becomes pretty much unforeseeable.
Or unforcible, I believe she said.
Unforcible, I'm sorry. May I ask you to please reconsider and discuss minor changes to this ordinance before moving to a balance?
I think by striking this, that would eliminate that concern. Because we would be moving to a 52, like, there'd be no week, there'd be no, could be an opportunity for discretion of police officers involved, and then we would basically be moving this ordinance in as a year-round ordinance, 52, you know. Cover all 52 weeks. There would be, there would be no one-week allowance. So we would be covering that up, and I think that becomes a moot point.
Yeah, the amount of time that the vehicles would be obstructing would be out of the rest. There would be no week grace period, it starts at our number.
Correct.
Okay.
So with Alan's motion, I, the second, based on the conversation.
Yeah, so then, based on this conversation and lack of a second for Alan's motion, I would, I would make a new motion. I would, I would move to adopt ordinance 2020-3, amending chapter 28, general parking regulations of the township code ordinances by adding restrictions prohibiting parking in certain locations at all times and prohibiting the parking of certain vehicles in right-of-way of township, of the township, subject to the deletion. We would delete subsection E, F, and H that are already addressed in the PA Motor Vehicle Code. So those sections are already addressed in the PA Motor Vehicle Code, and, and the deletion of the seven-day exception provided for in the subsection I.
Alright, I'm seconding that. Okay. We have a motion, we now have a second. We have any further discussion on this? Tom, you were pretty clear as to what you wanted to have included.
Correct.
Excluded.
Right, it would be the deletions of the subsection, or deletions of section E, F, and H that are already addressed in PA Motor Vehicle Code, and then the deletion of the seven-day exception provided for in the subsection I. So we're going to get rid of the seven-day, we're taking out, we're deleting the seven-day exception as well.
Okay, alright. Then, all those in favor of passing that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion passes. Alright. Ordinance 2020-4, amendment to township zoning regulations, township code ordinances. I think we talked about tabling this one.
Right, you're continuing the hearing, so you should probably table the action.
So we have a motion to table or act?
Yeah, I'll move, I'll move to table consideration of ordinance 2020-4, amending chapter 52, the zoning of township code ordinances by adding restrictions to the existing residential parking requirements until such time a public hearing on the amendment is included. So we'll extend that. That'll get us, that'll get us up, and hopefully we can have a meeting open to the physical presence of the public.
Yes.
Near future, and we can take more input and receive more input on this particular ordinance.
Okay, so we have a motion to table. I'm going to give a second for this. Any of those in favor of tabling this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
New business. Final subdivision for Ziegler Property 506 Rock Point Road. I'll get someone to make a motion for that.
Alright, I'll move to approve final subdivision for Ziegler Property 506 Rock Point Road, prepared by GD Keener LLC, dated February 17, 2020, last revised March 10, 2020. We have the following modifications to township ordinance plans. Modification to chapter 42, article 4, section 42-71, to waive preliminary plan processing procedure. Modification to chapter 42, article 4, section 42-123A9, to waive agreements to existing perimeter streets. Modification to chapter 42, article 5, section 42-96A, to permit deep lot of the plan to be prepared at a scale of 200 feet to the inch. Modification to chapter 42, article 7, section 42-162E, to waive dedication of additional right-of-way long river streets. to waive dedication of additional right of way along perimeter streets. Approval of the final subdivision plan and the granting of the ordinance modification are subject to bond conditions. Compliance with the review comments outlined by David Miller Associates Incorporated in her review letter dated March seventeenth, twenty twenty. Applicants written acceptance of any conditions within thirty days will receive a notice and approval by Township Board Supervisors, all provided by the township. If the conditions are not accepted, approval by the Board Supervisors will be revoked and the application will be denied with reasons listed as conditions of approval of the plan.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, the motion is seconded, do we have any discussion, is there anything you had on this motion?
Could you repeat that, Alan?
I just cleared this.
Please.
Okay. Any discussion, all right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Preliminary final land development plan for P T V eleven oh two LLC Marietta Dollar General Store Extension of Time.
I move to accept the preliminary final land development plan for P T V oh one zero two LLC Marietta Dollar General Store until July seventeenth, twenty twenty, is granted by the applicant.
I'll second that. Motion to second, all those in favor of extending the extension of time, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
That motion passes. Under resolutions, resolution twenty twenty dash seven, approving contract change orders for Route four forty-one, Route seven seventy-two, traffic signal modifications project.
And I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash seven, proving contract change order one for an increase in the amount of five thousand dollars, and change order two for an increase of the amount of nine thousand five dollars for the route four forty-one, route seven seventy-two, traffic signal modifications project.
I'll second that motion.
Jeff, so what specifically?
There's two items, we changed the luminaires above the intersection to LEDs instead of the standard Cobra head lights for the intersection. Those have been completed, you can probably tell the difference at an intersection already. The nine thousand dollars is for the drilling of additional conduit under two roadways with the new control box, new wiring, the conduit that was under the four forty-one and water was too small, so they had to pour another hole. So that's, and pull additional water, so that's the additional nine thousand dollars there. Just a side note, the projects on hold, Penn Dot, this is a Penn Dot roadway, Penn Dot intersection, Penn Dot ramp line, all those projects have been pulled off. So at this point, the intersection is not complete. The presence detection detectors in the roadway, under the approaches, that tell the control box that there's a vehicle there, those have been disconnected. But the radar detection that goes up on the arm, those white boxes that go up on the arms, have not been installed. So the traffic signals operating on timing instead of presence detection. So there may be times when you're on four forty-one and there's no one on Anderson Ferry Road,
and you're still waiting.
You're going to hit a red light and you're going to have to wait because it's on timing instead of detection. And it's only because we had to pull the crew off because of the actions of the builder.
All right, okay. So it's one of those things where people that drive that frequently are just going to have to live with until we can
We've already had a couple calls about it, so
All right, we don't need to hear that until it's completed, or does this might be the before we're
No, they won't bill us for this until it's actually completed, right? We're approving the change order.
Have they, have they been deemed lifeless, uh, like disdaining, or have they shut down?
Shut down.
They're shut down? The company who's doing this work?
Yes, it's shut down, yes, just to be clear.
Okay, so all those in favor of approving resolution twenty twenty dash seven, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right. Resolution twenty twenty dash eight, extending real estate tax, extending real estate
Resolution twenty twenty dash eight, extending the period in which real estate taxes may be paid.
I'll second that. So for clarity, people will still get the discount if they pay by
If they're thirty.
Correct. Current system before, well, we haven't been approvals though. Current system is they pay the full tax rate through June thirtieth. After June thirtieth, they would pay about ten percent. So what we're saying here is we're not rescinding the penalty, we're just changing the rate to zero percent.
Correct.
That's for the balance of twenty twenty. And that is what the intention, because of the unusual circumstances, the amount of people that may be out of work, or the financial hardship that's imposed all of a sudden, to give people a little bit of grace, a little bit extra time to spend. Now, if the people don't pay by the end of the year, then the penalty would be imposed.
Correct, they would receive the, like, would notice as they would any other, any other year. This is just relieving or reducing the penalty rate to zero percent.
Okay. All right. So all those in favor of resolution twenty twenty dash eight, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Motion?
I'll make that move.
Okay, all right. Motion decisions, award contract for twenty twenty oil and ship roadway products.
All right, I move to award the contract from the state code of Crable Church Road, Trout Run Road, Chelmsford Drive, Hampshire Court to Martin's Pavilion, Incorporated, based on bids received and opened on Monday, March thirtieth, twenty twenty. And this is to sale.
Do you want to, you want to read it with a dollar amount, Alan, just a
Martin's Pavilion command at fifty-eight thousand five hundred dollars and seventy-seven cents. And the next
Say, Amaker?
Amaker East River, and East Limited at fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-four cents. So Martin's gets up.
Okay. So Alan made a motion, can I get a second for that?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor of awarding that to Martin's Pavilion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Award contract for roadway materials aggregate for twenty twenty.
I move to award the contract for aggregate materials for freight all brought to County Line Quarry Incorporated and delivery, and delivered to Pennsys Supply Incorporated, based on bids received and opened on Monday, March thirtieth, twenty twenty, and listed as Pennsys Supply Incorporated. The F O B total was fifty-five hundred dollars, delivered total was eight thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars. And County Line Quarry Incorporated was five thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars. That was the F O B total, and then delivered total was eight thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars. I'm sorry, eight thousand six hundred eighty, did I say that correctly, eight thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars?
I'll second that. Now, am I to understand this, that the way we're doing this, that if we decide to pick it up ourselves, we will buy from county market?
Correct.
If we decide to have it delivered, it would come
Get it from Pennsys.
Correct. Typically, we don't do it that way, but I mean, that's
Typically, they're consistent, that one company would be lower than both.
Right. Okay.
Right, it's been a few years since we did it this way.
Okay, all right. That's fine, all right, so all those in favor of rewarding contracts, either freight onboard or delivery, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Do you command the line, what we're hoping?
Yes.
Under or over?
No, they're all consistent, what was budgeted.
Okay. Award contract for roadway materials asphalt for twenty twenty.
I move to award the contract for asphalt materials for freight onboard to Highway Materials Incorporated and delivered to Pennsys Supply Incorporated, based on bids received and opened on Monday, March thirtieth, twenty twenty.
It looks like It looks like we have a typo in the four hour reason.
The delivered total for Pennsys, does that mean twenty-eight? So it's eighteen three ten, should that be twenty-eight three ten? I'm sorry.
This is Right here, there's no way that delivered total would be eight thousand dollars less.
This is where it's wrong. It's actually ten thousand dollars more.
Does that make sense?
No.
There's got to be a typo in this, ten dollars and seventy cents. Yeah. I mean, I mean, it just can't make sense that way.
No, if you're able to, we can share this. See, the grade. It should be twenty-eight thousand three hundred.
You would think that.
Right.
I mean, we can't assume that, but there's no way that delivered total would be less than the F O B total.
Give me a second here. Fifty-three, fifty-three, fifty times two hundred times.
That spreadsheet we're looking at, is that from
The bid tab, yeah, that should be ten thousand seven hundred.
Okay.
So the total would be, instead of eighteen three ten, the total would be twenty-eight
Thousand, let's get the number right.
Can you align that?
Yes.
First I have to be able to see it. Who else don't get?
I hear people talking, talking.
Yeah, I do, I have twenty-nine, twenty-nine thousand as a total. Twenty-eight three Twenty, twenty Twenty thousand three hundred ten dollars and seventy cents. So it's, so it is, it is just a missing, the one should be One, the eighteen, the eighteen thousand would be twenty-eight. That's correct. Every ten, so That's correct.
Twenty-three ten?
Three ten seven. It's twenty-eight thousand, it's, yeah, instead of eighteen thousand three hundred ten seventy, it should be twenty-eight thousand three hundred ten seventy. And then that's the
So having said that, Highway Materials would be lower bidder on the F O B price or the delivered price. All right, so you want to
Why don't we table this, we'll go back and, I didn't generate this table, so I want to make sure we get it right, so why don't we just table this?
This particular
This particular
This particular one.
Then you're generating that table.
No, those were based on the reading of the bids, it could have just been transcribed from others.
Okay, all right.
We can check the numbers.
I'd rather table it and get it right.
Okay, so we're going to table that one. All right, so how about award contract for roadway improvements to Gibble Road, Long Lane, Crable Church Road, Trout Run Road?
I move to award the contract for the completion of roadway improvements to Gibble Road, Long Lane, Crable Church Road, and Trout Run Road to Pennsys Supply Incorporated. It's based on bids received and opened on Monday, March thirtieth, twenty twenty. And they're listed as, with three bids, Pennsys Supply Incorporated gave a bid of one hundred twenty-seven thousand eight hundred forty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. Highway Materials Incorporated gave a bid of one hundred thirty-two thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars and six cents. And Long's Asphalt Incorporated gave a bid of one hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars and ninety cents. So I'll award that to Pennsys Supply.
Okay, so we have a motion, can I get a second for that? A motion, we have a second. All those in favor of rewarding that contract to Pennsys Supply, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Summer Playground Program Agreement with Greater Elizabeth Town Area Recreation Commission and Community Services, also known as Gears.
I'm going to approve our agreement with the Greater Elizabeth Town Area Recreation Commission and Community Services. Gears to provide staffing and program for the twenty twenty summer playground program that you help from and for.
I'll second that motion.
Jeff, do you want to just give us a little bit of background on the reason why we're considering this?
We had some changes to staffing this year for the playground, and in discussion with Park Commission, members of Park Commission that typically don't deal with this issue, this was one of those like Ginnethen type projects. There was some discussion about looking elsewhere, instead of trying to find two new leaders of staffing that perhaps we could, as Marietta Borough and Raffael Township and some others do, contract with Gears to run the program. We met with Doug Nouse, the person that does the summer programming. They tailor, they will tailor their program exactly to what we had. They will do the registration for us, there will be T-shirts, they'll provide the staffing, provide all the insurance, they do everything that we would have done at a much, at a lower cost to us, but provide the same service. Again, this is just for one year, see how it goes. And at this point, we may have to make a decision shortly as to whether we could even have a summer program based on, based on what's happening.
Right.
Again, they would be doing all the registration, collecting the registration fees. They did provide a budget to us for the projected cost to run this. It comes within the budget that we had established for the park program, comes well within that. Let's hear it. And they run a very successful program in Marietta and the other locations that they provide.
And they would do the background checks.
They do the background checks, no one's able to work until they get the background checked. They'd be doing all the supply and purchases, we would not be doing any of that.
What about the age, I know there was a little difference, how young what they typically have as a starting age versus
They typically have seven as a starting age, we have five, I think six is the agreed upon starting age, yes, as a compromise, but probably even more, or so, it's more appropriate. Five, five seems a little young, they're probably kindergarten at the time. And again, they go a little bit, they go to twelve, they allow twelve-year-olds.
So again, an extra
Extra year old in on the back end.
Okay, so
And we talked about keeping, the budget that they put together kept the registration fee at last year.
And we want to address that.
I did a real brief analysis of if we wanted for a one-year break because of, towards the tax break discount period, because of some situations, I'm sure that's occurring throughout the township, that we look at a one-time reduction of the fee from, say, the eighty-five dollars down to forty dollars. Running those same numbers through their projections in the way of expenses and so forth, and the same number of kids, and there's a number of variables here, there could be more kids, less kids. Those types of things, but at forty dollars, we would be about two hundred dollars over our budgeted amount for the program. But we would provide everyone the opportunity to register at forty dollars, giving everyone five dollars.
This is not only based on your project.
Correct, right, this would be the same, yeah, no, we do allow non-residents. There isn't a non-resident here allowed, but typically, there's none outside of And they would be targeting just us, it would not be targeting And they would be targeting just us, it would not be targeting other areas of their service area to come to our playground program.
Do we wanna say $40 for East Towneville Township residents, 85 for not, it means we want to do that? Would that make things, we're gonna nearby your address, whether they're.
We can establish a registration fee and however you want, that they will collect the fee as you establish it.
How do we feel about for this year, this year own, because of, once again, the circumstances with fires, lowering the price East Towneville Township residents?
So 40, 40.
I'm okay with that, uh, do we have many children remain that have brothers, sisters, like two, two or more?
Yeah, we do.
Let's say. Maybe do $50 and then 40, we do, 40, it was $70 or something.
We could do that, we wanna keep, we wanna keep it easy, I mean, you can, keep it easy to administer. I know if you have two household, but, but if we're lowering it to 40, basically we are kind of giving. I, I, I would like to charge 85 for non-East Towneville Township residents. And we'll say 40 for this year for. So that, I, I think we said budgetarily based on last year's numbers, and I was assuming. All the, the numbers that happened last year, so maybe some of those people might have announced, maybe their amount of kids were that way. Marietta kids, um, around $2,000 impacts.
The difference, yes.
Difference, yes.
But still, within $200 in the budgeted amount for the program.
So, what we budgeted, we should still come in, in, because we save place for years.
And we don't have a limit, like, how many kids?
We, we have.
We don't need to.
I don't know, do you think they would?
And they would adjust staff accordingly.
Okay, well, $40, it could bring out a lot more children.
Maybe.
It's not a death.
Right, not a death, are we gonna handle, like, how many years can handle?
Well, they, they would hire staff according to the number of kids that they have.
So they, what you're saying is if we add, let's say, an extra 50 kids over the previous year.
They would bring in extra staff in, right?
And this is, this is kind of a one-year trial, just to see how it goes. All right, okay, so can I, um, all those in favor of, do we need to incorporate that into the motion, or we're just, we're just hiring years, or?
You can send a second motion, actually fee-related, make a motion regarding the fees.
So let's keep it clean, let's just, this, this motion is just to address hiring years, so all those in favor of entering into agreement, years signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll make a motion that we set the rate for summer playground for 2020. At $40 for an East Towneville Township resident child. And $85 for non-East Towneville Township participants. Awarded such a way that, based on where the child lives. Because if the child lives here, the grandma lives there, and grandma's just staying, so, based on the resident where the child.
Oh, the participant.
Right, participant, okay. So can I get a second for that?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on that? If not, single, please, the province may go.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's move down to, uh, other business. Appointment to the East Towneville Township Super Authority.
I'm going to approve the appointment of Daniel R. Ox to the, say, our Super Authority. To complete the line's part of town, Jake Schmelz, until the 7th, 31st, 2021.
I'll second, appreciate it.
Okay, all those favor approving Daniel Ox signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Joint petition to stay 2020 upset tax sales.
I move to approve authorization, or, um, I move to authorize, uh, the board chairman to sign the joint petition to stay 2020 upset, uh, upset tax sales. Presently scheduled to be held September 21st, 2020, as prepared by the treasurer of the county, uh, of Lancaster.
I'll second that. Okay. And this is from Mayor Martin.
Where the county treasurers requesting that we join in a petition to the court to stay the 2020 upset tax sales. Again, based on that same reasoning as with the base, real estate tax, idea of giving some, those break, but also, just as important is all the mechanisms needed to do this, a lot of those are closed. Unable to form functions associated with these sales, so.
So.
It takes petitions in court to do it.
Okay, the stay is just saying not gonna be held September 21st, but it's gonna be held.
It would be held the following year.
Oh, it's gonna be.
The following year, it's once a year.
Once a year, okay. It's not like the Kentucky Derby where it's September, it's gonna be September, it's not at all, okay. Why that was wrong, okay. All right, so we have motion, we have a second, all those in favor, uh, of staying signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, I, I did wanna have a little bit of discussion, um, obviously we have an economy where unemployment is rapidly rising. Real estate sales are probably grinding to a halt, if not non-existent right now. So that's gonna have some impact to us in terms of our revenues, we're not gonna have as much in the way of real estate transfer taxes coming in, clearly there are income taxes we've collected to be, um, greatly diminished, right? So, at this point, Jeff, we do have a fairly strong cash position.
Correct.
So I, I don't think the township's in danger of not being able to pay the bills, or, you know, having to lay people off at this point in time, so we can continue doing the business of this township. I think it's just important that we, we, we recognize that this could be an issue later on, we don't know how deep this, this particular shut-in, slowdown, how long if they ask how far it goes, but we'll have something there. So, all right, I guess I would just turn to you, and, uh, I saw that Jody was listening, just, you know, the people that, um, in terms of township, just to keep an eye on in terms of our cash flow and our cash position, and if we start to sense that something's gonna become problem, or we're gonna be tight, we're gonna need to talk about that more in advance, so that if there's a project or something that's scheduled for the fall, perhaps we can. Otherwise, I think we're okay, we, we still need to be cautious, fair enough?
That's right, our particular concern, of course, is earning on tax, real estate transfer tax, those things are really gonna be down, the real estate, uh, tax itself, majority of that comes in under the discount period paid from escrow accounts of mortgages. So, that holds fairly consistent, um, but real estate tax, transfer tax, obviously is nothing now, and earned income tax should be down as well.
But if we're getting forbearances, if we're saying, hey, you don't gotta pay the rent this month, but the mortgage this month, then you know, at some point that's gonna.
That's gonna show too, exactly. I'm making the way into next year.
Thankfully, again, we have a, 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 a cash position.
When do you normally begin your accounting, money, taxes, the spring taxes?
It would have been April, this month. A lot of folks pay with a discount, one consumer. That's the end of this month.
How many payments do you get? Good to do.
I, I don't know.
Okay, all right. Correspondence announcements, anything there, Jeff, if you wanna highlight?
No, it's pretty much your typical reports and so forth, uh, it has been required with some meetings being canceled. Um, the PSEs Conference, I don't know if you saw that email, that has been canceled, yeah.
The parade has been canceled.
The parade has been canceled, May Fest of the historical societies, that's canceled. One issue that I do wanna make everyone aware of is to keep checking the township website. We are, the office is closed, we are conducting business at arms length, we have drop-in pickup box outside, we're, um, suggesting payments, if you need to make payments in person, you drop them, don't find the payment box on the, the recycling shed out here in the parking lot. Trash has been an issue today, there was trash day, uh, trash collection is on schedule, but, um, and recycling is scheduled as normal. Yard waste and oversized items, um, have been temporarily, temporarily suspended, we're not picking, we're not picking this up, yard waste has no place to go, the compost site is closed, um, Columbia site is closed, there's some other places closed. Of importance are two things, we're continuing to collect trash, e-waste is continuing, but for the safety of those working, all the trash must be contained in a bag. Can't have loose trash in the bottom of a can or in a box, needs to be in a bag, for the safety of the workers that handle this.
So bag inside the can.
Bag inside the can, no loose trash placed directly into a trash can. If you don't do that, and again, I don't know how it worked out today, because this is kind of the first pickup since some of this came out, um, they're willing to do that, they will not pick up your trash, they don't want to be touching loose trash, they want it in bags, in a container. Because of the office being closed, and because of, you know, the fact that a transaction to get an extra bag tag beyond the limit, we've waived the requirement for tags. Unfortunately, some people have taken advantage of that, and, um, a number of folks put out abundance of trash today in all kinds of conditions.
A, a spring cleaning type of mentality.
Uh, yeah, you can say that.
They line this street.
Yeah, these are just, yeah, these are just some of the pictures that came back from the hauler today, um, people putting out, and again, oversized items are not being picked up. Putting out all kinds of stuff loose. Again, pay attention to the website, we're trying to collect as much as possible, give people a break on the extra tags, but people really need to work with us on getting the loose trash into bags, maybe spreading that over a week, a couple weeks of pickups, so that it's not 20 bags or 15 bags in front of their house. On a Thursday morning.
Okay, so what happened is, did the hauler pick those up, or?
I think some of it was picked up, but, um, some of it was left online.
Okay. All right, I see.
We asked, and again, this is on the website, that we asked if they use common sense in limiting the number of extra bags. We don't need people using this waiver, or we're gonna have to go back to getting tags and running people around and hearing what we don't need to.
But they don't teach common sense in school anymore, so. All right.
So, not only for trash notifications, but for meeting notices and so forth, pay attention to the website, we try to keep it, we try to keep it up as much as possible, as possible, a little bit behind. It's important right now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Chairman, I'd also like to mention that, um, we did, I believe we all discussed in, uh, Monday, I believe it was Monday, that the playground facilities were taken off with, I guess, caution tape, uh, or do not cross this line tape, uh, basically. That so that the playgrounds were not being played on by multiple children, however, the parks and the walking trails remain, uh, available for people to use and be outdoors, per the governor's, uh, recommendations, and then, uh, as long as they're making social distancing and are courteous to other people. You know, vicinity, so, and I, I've seen, but honestly, I, I've seen a real, uh, good, good spirit from those who are outdoors, um, community, uh, those who are walking around. Just a, a good kindness and neighborly behavior, um, by the residents of East Towneville Township, so I would just continue to encourage that, as you're on the bow, be courteous, but also, you know.
Be mindful.
That be mindful of, of other people's, um, where, how other people feel during this time, but, uh, no way to, I wouldn't discourage anyone from, uh, being out and out and waving and saying hello at a distance to your neighbor.
I, I did notice one time when I was at the ancient park walking the dog, I saw about five or six kids, and I knew they weren't from the same household and.
Right.
Pretty close contact, now that the tape is up, um, I, I mean, I noticed a lot of kids playing on the sidewalk, but they're, they, they seem to be keeping a safe distance, and, and a lot of times they're from the same household, too.
Lots of times they're from the same household, or, or, um, they're not congregating in groups of women 10, which is also a recommendation. So, I, I've seen mostly, I, I've seen mostly, uh, children outside 10, most under adults, so the supervision.
I did see a couple of kids shooting hoops, things like that, we, we just, I mean, we could say over and over again, be mindful of the social distancing, but at the end of the day, we, we just can't. I mean, what would you do in the case of a basketball, you just would hope they would.
Right.
Stay apart.
And again, if it becomes a large congregation of, of, it becomes a large congregation of people, I believe the governor has, uh, given the, our, our police the authority, uh, to disperse a larger congregation, a current congregation of 10 or more. So again, that falls to the, uh, that falls to the, to the, uh, jurisdiction of our police force and also the, you know, their discernment, so.
Okay.
But I haven't, I, I haven't seen large congregations in East Towneville Township, so, uh, so far so good, and I applaud the residents of East Towneville Township for handling this crisis in a, a calm, you know, a calm and neighborly manner, you know, so.
And I, I would just say for the center that is listening, I know our post office, it's a small lobby, so hopefully if you see someone in there, you would wait till they finished before you went in as well. So, that is, that is an issue, and, and, and the post office historically has been a place where people would meet neighbors and have, you know, social time together, but this is one of those times where if someone's inside, waits to get their mail, leave, then you go in, you know, just practice, again, common sense there, all right. Um, in terms of parks and recreation, Jeff, Jeff, uh, let's talk a little bit about the, um, music in the park schedule, um, in terms of maybe renovating, you know, a shorter schedule perhaps, we're not even sure.
At this, at this point, we're not sure, the, uh, the schedule is full from the end of May, last weekend of May, May 31st would be the first Sunday program through August. Uh, each weekend is, is booked, um, the donation letters have not gone out yet, um, those that typically receive those donations to help sponsor either a band or, or a part of a band, um. We may have to cut back on the beginning of that program, we may have to decide to cut back a little bit, about summer, maybe every other week or something, that's probably something the park commission should take up at the next meeting. But they just, to, to, to let me know the schedule is full, we, we did, we were able to get everyone lined up, which we thought was going to be a little bit more difficult than most.
And I'll say from, uh, the police department standpoint, we have a, a mutually type of agreement that we put in, will be putting in place with neighboring police departments, should there be significant officers down, our department or neighboring department, if we can, basically, you know, help cover calls and neighborhood communities and vice versa. You know, similar to what you can see in the case of a fire, compared. Anything else?
I just wanna say thank you to Jeff for guiding us through all this, you're, you're here every day, taking all the emails, too. to get it on, or any relations, thank you.
We, uh, we have a good communication stream coming from the county, um, other players in this, so we try to keep you involved, you know, they, today as much, as much as possible. We've been fortunate that we haven't had to do much in the way of activating the emergency operation center, online resources in to deal with it, so, so far, we've been pretty fortunate. It's, it's difficult working environment, we have two employees working from home. Um, we have one employee having to take some time off because of a child that was ill, so there's always the thought that maybe, you know, someone along the way was infected, so, you know, we've, we've taken as much precaution as we can here in separation, but also closing the lobby and, and so forth, so. I appreciate the opportunity that you've given me to be able to say, hey, let's set someone up working at home if they can, and continue, so, that has been very helpful to us.
I've been working out of my house for the last three weeks, and, and I, I find myself as productive, if not more productive, because there's a lot less interruptions.
Yes.
And so, um, it's, it's, it, it might be the way that we all start to, you know, perhaps do our jobs more in the future. Where, where do we have the type of work that we do?
The, the arrangement that we're in now has, has started us to think of maybe different applications for some of these things, you know, the video conferencing, but maybe just more of a casual type network amongst us, instead of the formal email this, email that. You know, and attachments to documents, being able to share documents in a form, informal.
What's that?
I would, I would suggest, we're looking at things like that. I would suggest to John that if he's lacking distractions, then you contact my wife, Rochelle, she'd be happy to send him two or three distractions, uh, to your, to your home. Although I don't think that's permissible, or maybe, it's not permissible right now, but.
Yeah, you're also, you've been doing that two supervisors are, are growing quarantine here, so.
We are, we are indeed, I, I call it my roan of beard, but.
You're a.
Yeah, my roo.
My mind's a quarantine.
Oh, yours is a quarantine, it's probably more politically correct, to call it quarantine, yeah.
Okay, how about we entertain a motion to adjourn before we begin?
So moved.
Alright, you can adjourn. Thank you to our general public for tuning in this way, and, uh, I don't know if this is our only meeting this way, but certainly.
Let's hope and pray that that's the case. I accept that.